Broadcast has been set.
Thank you so much, Ms. Adley. The time is now five sixteen P M. And the March twenty six twenty twenty four Policy and Governance Committee meeting will come to order. We'll move to item one point two. Welcome and opening remarks from the committee chair. Good evening and welcome to the Policy and Governance Committee meeting. I am Jonathan Briggs, Chair and Member of the Board. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, and I look forward to our work tonight. We will now have introductions of our committee members, starting with board members, then administration staff, then board office staff, and our board legal counsel. So I will turn it over to our board vice chair and then others. I do ask that if you're not speaking, if you can mute yourself, so we don't have any background noise, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I am the Vice Chair Lolita E. Walker. I also am a member of the Policy and Governance Committee and am excited to be here to help make policy for us to run more efficient, not only here but in our schools as well. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ray Rivera Forbes, and I'm the forty-third student member of the board. And my camera does happen to be off because I am on my spring break for PG CPS. I am also the Vice Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee.
Great. Administration staff?
Good evening. I'm Robin Welsh, Director of Government Relations Compliance and Procedures. And we do have two guests with us this evening from administration, so I'll let them introduce themselves.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Dr. Tisa Holly. I'm the Director of Student Services.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Darren Watkins. I'm the Senior Systems Analyst for the Student Apps Department.
Our board office staff.
Bill Defense Patrick, Director of Press, Georgia County Board of A.
Cindy Advent, I'm the City Secretary, Board Office.
Finally, our board counsel.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dennis Whitley III, the Law Officers of Shipley and Horn, and we are board counsel.
Great. Thank you so much to you all. So we're now going to move to item one point three, Adoption of the Meeting Agenda. Colleagues, before I call for a motion to accept the agenda for tonight, please be aware that, one, the meeting order will vary slightly to accommodate our visiting speakers. After item two point O, Public Comments on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items, we will consider item four point one, Discussion on Policy Fifty One Forty Three, Bullying, Harassment, or Intimidation. And then, two, Bylaw, Regular Board Meetings was added to the agenda. So may I have a motion to adopt the March twenty six to twenty twenty four Policy and Governance Committee Meeting Agenda as amended?
So. Second.
Great. So it's been moved and seconded. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The March twenty six twenty twenty four Policy and Governance Committee Meeting Agenda is adopted as amended. We're moving on to item one point four, Approval of Committee Meeting Minutes. May I have a motion to approve the March twelfth twenty twenty four Policy and Governance Committee Meeting Minutes?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes. The March twelfth twenty twenty four Policy and Governance Meeting Minutes are approved. We're going to move on to item two point O, Public Comment on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items. Registered public comment speakers can be live, pre-recorded, using video, audio, or written. Currently, there are no registered public comment speakers this evening. But we do always welcome folks to join and to offer their perspective on our policies. So please sign up when you can. We're going to move on now, as I mentioned, to item four point one, to accommodate our speakers that we have here this evening. And so that's for Policy Fifty One Forty Three, Bullying, Harassment, or Intimidation. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to introduce the guest speakers and provide the committee with an update on Policy Fifty One Forty Three, Bullying, Harassment, or Intimidation. Mrs. Welsh?
Thank you. So at a previous committee meeting, we had the conversation related to bullying, harassment, and intimidation, the policy, and whether or not there was a need for any revisions. And as we were going through it, what came out of the policy when we read it, it said that the Board's Education, Board of Education's first meeting in January each year, the Chief Executive Officer or Superintendent now shall provide to the Board a summary report of bullying, harassment, and intimidation. And so I think the conversation went that we would look at the results of the report, and from there, see if there's anything we should be revising within the policy itself based on the data that was in the report. At this point, I don't know whether the Board ever did receive a copy of the report. I know you did, Jonathan, Board Member Briggs, however.
I'm going to take full accountability for that. You shared the report with me, and my goal was to share it out last week, and I never got around to sharing it. And after you just said it, my to-do list hit me. So.
Okay, well, that's okay.
And we'll make sure that board members have an opportunity to respond, as well as we'll link the recording to this discussion.
So, well, and so in the meantime, though, I did talk to Dr. Tisa Holly and asked, and talked about her coming back to have a conversation about the data, because there was a good amount of data within the reports that were sent up to MSD. And so she was kind enough to be willing to come back and bring with her Darren, Darren Watkins, from I T, so that they could do a presentation on the data, because I think that's probably the most helpful for the committee, and then making a decision on whether there should be, you know, changes to the policy. So I'm not going to waste any more people's time. I'm going to let the two of them move forward with their presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh, once again. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay, so you're going to share the screen. So today's presentation is really just that. It is our annual MSD report. Let's go to the next slide. Next slide. So in accordance with the Safe Schools Reporting Act of two thousand and five, every school in the state of Maryland is responsible for reporting to MSD the reported incidents for bullying, harassment, and intimidation. And so what you're going to see, what we're going to walk you through, is just that the data that we provide at the end of October every year concerning school year twenty-three. So once again, all of the data that's shared on this evening is from last school year. And we're in the process of gathering this school year's information, because that's always reported out on October thirtieth each year. The fields that we will look at will be incident rates, location, and description of the incidents, the ages of the targeted students. We no longer view students as victims, but instead, the targeted students and the perpetrators. We'll look at alleged motives for the perpetrators, the investigative methods that were used by the schools, what were the corrective actions taken by the schools, the number of days that students may have missed as a result of the reported incident, and then the number of false allegations reported. So let's jump right in. So first category, we're going to look at the data by age, that of the alleged targeted students and the alleged student offenders. Next slide. So with each slide, I'm going to kind of be quiet for like a second, just to give you an opportunity to see what I'm saying. So that first column has the number of alleged targeted students, once again, by age. Then the next column provides us with the number of alleged student offenders in the alleged targeted students' school. And as you can see, I've highlighted age twelve, because that is the number where we had the most reports, incidents reported for alleged targeted students and also for student offenders. And that, if we were to go to the next slide, so you're able to take a look there, you're able to see additional ages. And so that twelve, thirteen, really eleven, twelve, thirteen age range is primarily middle school. And when we really drill down into the data, we receive more reports at middle school than elementary or from high school. Let's continue on. So alleged, and more information about our alleged targeted students. So the number of incidents that were reported where there were multiple targeted students, it was twenty-one. And then there were five hundred sixty-five reported incidents where it was only one targeted student involved. Next slide. So of our alleged targeted students, there were ninety-seven of them that had an I E P, and there were eighteen of them that had a five oh four plan. We have to provide a response to MSD around the amount of days where a student was absent as a result of the incident. So of those reported, as far as the alleged targeted student is concerned, five hundred eighteen of them did not miss school as a result of the incident. And then we're able to see subsequent days, one days, two days, all the way down to ten or more days. So let's look at kind of like that same information as it pertains to our alleged offender students. There were one hundred sixteen alleged offender students that had an I E P and twenty alleged offender students that had a five oh four plan. Six hundred forty-eight of the alleged offender students did not miss school as a result of the incident. And then we're able to see, once again, from one day missed on down to ten or more days. And then, once again, this is for the alleged offender students. So now let's look at the locations for where these incidents took place. So on this first slide, we're going to see the number of incidents that took place on school property. There were four hundred forty-four. And so two years ago, MSD wanted to drill down into that. Like, where exactly are these incidents taking place? Not are they just taking place on campus, but where on campus is it taking place? So we're able to see here, we had out of that four hundred forty-four incidents, a hundred ten of them were taking place in the classroom. And then the numbers begin to decline, decrease. Some of the other locations where incidents took place, and we see the number on the bus. We saw the number on a digital device off of school property. Incidents taking place either on the way to or from school. And then also, just wanted to take note, these last two areas, as far as off-property or at a school-sponsored activity or doing virtual learning, these are fields that are asked of us by MSD. But during school year SY twenty-three, we didn't have any incidents of bullying, harassment, or intimidation to take place in those areas. Let's continue description of the incidents. So we're going to end up seeing three slides that contains all the fields and all the various descriptions that could be used to categorize the incidents. And one thing I will state with all of the slides, they have been put in numerical order and descending order. So highlighted here in yellow are our top three descriptions that had, you know, the most. So demeaning behavior, just to be mean, was the number one. Description, teasing, name-calling, making critical remarks is second. And then any bullying, harassment, or intimidation that involved physical aggression. Those were the top three areas or descriptions of the incidences. And I'll give you a moment to be able to see the other categories. And once again, we have three slides of this, so we'll take our time and give you a moment to look. We continue to see demeaning behavior, to impress, that's number four. And then demeaning and making the student the target of jokes, number five. So you can already see a theme right there in our top five. We could go to the next slide whenever you're ready. Once again, take a moment to see some additional descriptors, excluding or rejecting the student, actions or comments related to the student's race, ethnicity, academic performance, sexual orientation, gender expression, socioeconomics, student's disability. And then that third slide, or that next slide, for this category. And then we have even smaller numbers as it pertains to religion, student sex, gang-related, gang recruitment, racial or ethnic harassment, human trafficking, or immigration status. All right, let's go to our next category. So let's look at alleged motives. So on this slide, we're able to see what were the alleged motives. Once again, the whys behind why the alleged offender took action. So our top two kind of coincide with what we just saw with the descriptions, just to be mean at two hundred and ninety, to impress others, one twenty-five. And you even see unknown, not deemed bullying. And so what that means is that, once the investigation was done and witness statements that it was not deemed bullying, that they weren't able to really even get a motive. And so those are categorized as unknown, not deemed bullying. So there was a hundred eleven of those. Once again, they were reported. But after they began to investigate, there was no alleged motive contributing to the fact of it being identified as not deemed bullying. So yeah, retaliation, physical appearance. But the top two, just to be mean and to impress others. Let's go to our next slide. So the investigative actions, documentation, and outcomes. We'll start with investigative actions. So this is essentially what the school did to investigate the reported incidents. So the highest number was actually interviewing the alleged target student, followed by interviewing the alleged offender. Then we go into interviewing the person that reported the incident, followed by interviewing the witnesses. Parents, at times, we can see, were brought in, the investigative process, the offender's parent, in addition to the targeted students. And then there were a few times where the nurse or law enforcement had to be involved. What were some of the documentation that was reviewed in this process? The majority of the incidents, when conducting the investigation, they used the witness statements. There were times when videos had to be reviewed, medical records, social media, students' records, and once again, and even law enforcement. There were a hundred ninety-seven, though, of the reported incidences where an offender was not identified in the case. And so in that, in those times, it makes it difficult for the investigation to be completed. Next slide. So the outcome of the investigation. So there were two hundred eight incidences during SY twenty-three that were deemed after investigation, that was determined that it was an incident of bullying, harassment, or intimidation, and that the proper consequences, interventions, and supports were applied. The others, and I did the math, the other three hundred sixty-six incidents that were reported were either determined to be incidences of conflict, weren't able to be verified, were identified as false allegations. But once again, there just wasn't enough details upon review of the incident and investigation that it could not be identified as substantiated bullying. So as we really close out the reporting for SY twenty-three, we're going to look at the interventions, supports, and corrective actions. And we're going to look at it as far as what were the interventions, supports, and corrective actions that were taken for the offender? And then also, what were the intervention, supports, and corrective actions that were taken for the targeted student? Because that's like the connection to the last time when we were together back in January, when we were looking at, well, what's being done for the targeted student? What's being done for the offender? So as far as the offender, in most cases, there was some form of an administrative conference with the student. The next layer was having the parent outreach, whether that was a phone call, and then also having the student-parent conferences. There were times when the school counselor or there was a referral to S I D or S S T. There were some instances where a student had to serve a short-term suspension. Then we utilized restorative practices, may have even had to have conversations with the I E P Chair, detention, in-school suspension, and other supports as listed, to even include a classroom change. And then for the targeted student, the student-parent conferences was used the most. And then a plan of support was implemented to include a go-to adult in the school. Once again, trying to make sure that students at all times feel safe and that their restoration is provided. So that's kind of one of the majors, making sure an identified go-to person is provided for each student. The parent outreach, once again, that's most, did a time of phone call. The other was following up several times with the targeted student, in accordance with our administrative procedure a month after an occurrence, a substantiated incident occurs. There to check in, but there are schools that are stating that even beyond the one-month check-in, that periodic check-ins were taking place to make sure that the student was well and that the student felt safe at school. Counseling supports might have been utilized, a safety plan may have been utilized, consulting with the I E P Chair, and even a school counselor or a therapist. So those are the interventions that were used for the targeted students. As we prepare to close out as a department, we don't just report out, but we actually analyze and see what strategies, what can we do to improve. So I want to just close out by just sharing, based on the data from last year, just some of the approaches that we've been utilizing to reduce bullying for this school year. So we go to the next slide. And the slides have been broken up into what's being done concerning staff, what's being done concerning our students, and also what's being done concerning our parents. So this school year, in addition to the principals being notified when a bullying report has been filed, each principal has identified one to three B H I bullying, harassment, intimidation points of contact, so that additional members of the team are notified immediately so that they can investigate and respond in a timely fashion, so that we are in compliance with our administrative procedure. We have been offering quarterly bullying data technical assistance sessions, where schools are able to come, you know, log in online and have a formal presentation, or kind of some schools use it as office hours, where they're able to come in and members of our team are there to answer their questions so that it's a smooth transition. And so that's really helping as well from a technical standpoint. And also, there are times when schools just want to hear our thoughts on if they're moving in the right direction as far as their investigation and their decision-making. We continue to have the Safe Schools videos that include bullying, what it looks like, how to define it, and what to do. And then also, it started last school year and it's continuing this year. We now have a Google investigation form that schools are able to use and upload their investigative documents, so that everything is in one place and it's not in several emails in the way it had been done in times past. As far as prevention for our students, as we all know, Bullying Awareness Month is October. So celebrations and observances took place throughout the month of October, with even some events being hosted by our office. We also had an opportunity in October to present and create greater awareness at P Grass to empower our student leaders to be ambassadors on this topic. We continue to utilize frameworks like P B I S and restorative approaches as a means to promote bullying awareness. We also use social-emotional learning lessons as an opportunity to teach lessons like being kind to each other. And then there were two additional initiatives that we've added this year, one being the Great Conversation Series. And that series is being utilized in our middle schools, because once again, we saw in the data and the ages that the middle school grades are where we're getting the most reports. And so we've used the Great Conversation as a virtual school-wide assembly to be able to share the first presentation is on kind of like what is bullying and how it's not going to be tolerated in our school system. And then the second part of the series is on conflict, because there are times where, as we saw in the data, the situation, the incident is a matter of conflict and it's not bullying, that unwanted repetitive treatment of another. And so members of the team, when we go and do the school-wide virtual assemblies are actually on campus. And so students are able to come after that assembly to the designated area that's identified by the principal to be able to come and speak with a mental health clinician. They're able to come. We have the computer set up so that if at that time, they now feel a little bit more empowered to report, because they may have been embarrassed or ashamed, just trying to create an environment, a welcoming environment, so that students know that we're going to do as best as we can as a district to keep them safe. And so students will come down, talk with us, report out. And then the last area, and it really came out of the Great Conversation Series, and the students saying, how can we report it? Can this be made a little bit easier? And so on this slide, you'll see our newest bullying, harassment, intimidation poster. And so right here, nice and simple, help stop bullying. And in the Q R allows us to be able to access directly to the bullying app. And so these posters were designed and have been distributed to all of our middle and high schools in English, Spanish, and French. Once again, trying to not just make, to make bullying, really, and bullying, reporting bullying more accessible to all, to staff, to students, to parents while in the building. So that's something new that we have, something else that's new that we've put into place this year in response to last year's data. And then lastly, as it pertains to our parents. Next slide, please. Back in October, we had a letter from Superintendent House to our parents. Especially, we were coming off of his series of superintendent town halls. And so bullying was definitely a common theme that we were hearing during those meetings. And so we wanted to make sure that we were educating the public on what our stance is and some of the strategies and programming that we have to keep students safe, so that parents are aware. And in that letter, we were also announcing to parents the beginning of our Bullying Advisory Council, B A C, because we've got the students back. And so the Advisory Council, once again, is new. It was started in January of this year. And so the council consists of parents, school building administrators, central office administrators, students, and other support staff, counselors, mental health clinicians, some teachers, community school coordinators. So really, all stakeholders, anyone that was interested or has a vested interest in this area. And so the council focuses in three areas, prevention through education, interventions, consequences, and restoration, and then also data monitoring and accountability. And so we really are looking forward to the work that the Bullying Advisory Council is going to do in the future. They were influential in that last poster that I shared with you. So it's a new, but very active council as well. And then on last year, we were able to do a webinar on. And then on last year, we were able to um, do a webinar uh on bullying. And so that's something that we continue to promote, um, to inform and educate our parents on bullying. And how it's to be reported in Prince George's County um, public schools. So this concludes our report, um, our MSD annual report for SY twenty-three. In addition to just some of the things that we are doing as an office um, this school year in response to the data. And if you ever need to get in touch, there's my contact information and Mr. Watkins' information. He is quite influential. We get the data, gather the data, and then he cleans it up. So that it can be presented appropriately uh to MSD. So it's a true collaborative effort um, amongst various departments. Thank you all.
Great, thank you so much, uh, Dr. Holly. And the floor is now open for discussions. Colleagues, if you have questions, please raise your hand and you'll be answered in the order of your hand. Um, Vice Chair Walker.
Hey, Dr. Holly, thank you so much. Um, as a parent whose child has been bullied in the past. I really do appreciate um, all the work that you and your team have, have made um, on, on prevention. And consequences as a result. Uh, I did have a question though. The question that I have is, when you get the data. Um, sorry, yeah, when you get the data back on, let's just say, which schools might be the highest um. For bullying and harassment, because you do get that data. Does that trigger some of the actions that you had, whether it be restorative circles? Or maybe the whole, all, all assembly where we are reviewing things like that? Can you just talk to me a little bit about what that triggers and how often you take a look at that data?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Great question. And, and to your point, we look, we're looking at the data like monthly. And so as we see the trends, and so that's really where the Great Conversation came. It was birthed out of that. There were three schools at the end of September that were at fifteen or more. And in just looking at that, that's way, that's too many at the start of the school year. And so we're able to um, respond to the data. So we're looking at it about monthly. And uh, putting our heads together, working alongside this building principals. And sometimes even the school counselors to be able to say what's going on. And it's not a gotcha, but how can we support the schoolhouse in um, addressing this matter? So like with one school that we've worked with, she's just like, my numbers are high because we're always talking about it. And naturally so, so it's kind of like, we're also having to get into a understanding of the culture of the building. To see if that really is the case or if there's something more. So really having those conversations with school-based staff.
Um, thank you. And then I guess my question to you um, is, do you believe that after the data is taken a look at, once it is triggered? That you, you all are going in and doing restorative practices of some type of sort at the schools as a result? That's where I'm really going with it. So yes, you want to, or might say, um, like, hey, that my numbers are high because of X, Y, and Z. Before those cases that, you know, you are starting to see that because of this behavior, there is a bullying increase. I'm just making sure that that's a trigger. It sounds like it is, but that's the trigger for you too, something, one of those other things that you talked about.
All right, yes, ma'am. Yes, indeed.
Great, um, Vice Chair of the Committee, um, Rivera Forbes.
Thank you. Thanks for recognizing me. Uh, I just had a few questions and I guess comments as well. Uh, I'm also sorry if you hear a lot of noise in the background. So my first one was, I love the information I was presented. I mean, it is very thorough and um, it's very informative too, especially about bullying, which I have seen in my entire career. In Prince George's County, so it is very concerning. I would say one of my biggest worries was seeing um, how majority of it was taking place in classrooms. Where there should be adult supervision. That does worry me a lot. And I do wonder what, you know, professional development practices teachers are taking to really be able to see bullying actively happening in front of them. So I would like to learn more about that. And um, I did see that restorative practices was a pretty low number. So I was wondering, um, with restorative practices, when you showed that number, were they just? The ones that were taken or are restorative practices usually taken after almost every single situation? It's like even if a student gets suspended, are they coming back, getting a restorative practice and so on? I know for Duval specifically, I'm a peer mediator, so usually when a student does come off of some form of suspension. Or maybe a situation with bullying, we'll have that restorative circle with the students, with the peer. If it's, you know, something that the peers are able to mediate. So I, I was just wondering about that as well. And I do like the emphasis on social emotional learning. I mean, I already know that you are very, very focused on that, Dr. Holly. So I love that, because I do think it definitely needs to be involved more in our county. And I also wanted to thank you for including P-grass, because often the students aren't included, especially SGA. So I appreciate that. That's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. So for what was reported out when you saw the number for restorative approaches? That was the number of reported incidents where restorative approaches was used um, by staff. Um, in, in response to the incident. Uh, so I receive your point about um, maybe utilizing restorative approaches more. So in the upcoming year, we'll see a trend that um, restorative approaches is utilized. So I definitely received that feedback. As far as PD, uh, professional development um, around. It happening in schools, in the classroom rather with staff. And so I know we're in the process now of developing our PD schedule for next year. Um, and realizing that it's not something, we can't just depend on Safe Schools videos. To educate and inform our staff, that we're going to have to be a little bit more innovative um, in our sharing. I know we share out a lot with principals um, and to these uh points of contact. But I receive your feedback as well as in, as far as making sure that on a more regular basis. We're also providing insight, um, teachable moments or what have you for staff. On this subject of bullying, so that we can see those numbers uh decline. So I receive both of those pieces and we'll be working to improve that area. So I, I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you so much.
Right. Now, I just wanted to uh chime in here as well um, and say first, Dr. Holly, thank you for the presentation. Mr. Watkins, thank you for uh, I'm assuming also being a part of that presentation. Um, I, I, I was thinking about this more around how we at a systems level could really um. Work collaboratively and by we having the board with your office. Um, and so a few things that I noticed is one, that more students with IEPs are targeted. Well, at least that's what I saw on the paper, correct me if I'm wrong here. Um, more alleged offender students had an IEP. Um, and a majority of incidents, as um, the, the Vice Chair of the Committee said, you know, are happening in classrooms, which is surprising. And in school cafeterias where you would assume that there is some type of um, adult supervision. But I also know as a former teacher that it doesn't matter how much supervision you have, students know how to, they know how to. And we, we also were students at one point and we know that, we knew that. So I get that. But what I want to think about is like, as part of this continuum of like, you all review the data, you all use it, you know, you collect it. I feel like on one part of this is like a policy piece, where it's like, could there be recommendations? As you're looking at it, and it's like, we can, we can address this, you know, as practitioners, right? Like, we go around and we can do these things and we can implement it, we can use dollars for this, but maybe there's some policy changes that need to happen. Um, for example, something that came to mind was like, I love the bullying po- poster with the QR code. But I know that like now in some uh districts, I'm not sure if that happens here, they have like the nine-eight-eight suicide um, number on ID. For students. I wonder almost like, we could have like the actual QR code for the bullying. So it's like, if you have an incident, you know, okay, I can turn my ID around, I can scan it, you know, and I can put in a report. And it's just, it's so accessible. It's not like I have to find the poster, but like, I now just have this as like a part of a tool that we have. Um, another thing I was thinking on the policy end was like, you know, um, referrals to additional resources for families. So like, they're like, hey, my child keeps getting bullied. I know I had, as a former teacher, like so many parents that were just, their child is pre- precious to them. And just the, 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 the thought of them being bullied and them being powerless and not knowing what to do is terrifying for some parents. And if they feel like their child is being the target, right? Like, they keep not understanding why, what can I do? Like, could there be something else where it's like, okay, great. I had a parent last year and I'm just gonna share a story really quickly. But her daughter was like, recorded and her shirt was pulled off and there was a fight and it was off school campus. And she was just embarrassed because she was like, my daughter is like, there's this video circulating. So she didn't, she wasn't happy with the principal's response, likely wasn't happy with like the interventions. So my thing is just, could there be some things around policy referrals? And do you all think that would be a kind of a best practice that could be included in the work that you do to the board to say, hey, here are recommendations on things that we could do further? But they may take like a revision of a policy or repeal of a policy to do that, or even a creation of something.
Sure, we would definitely um, be open to that. Um, and I mentioned about the Bullying Advisory Council with that um, intervention consequences and restoration. That um, subcommittee of the council will actually be conducting that type of research. To be able to see if there are, you know, we'll be looking across county, across state. To see if there are some recommendations, you know, at a policy level that we need to consider. And even put up um, for approval based on lessons learned. So we are definitely in that same space and would definitely be amenable to additional uh recommendations. Uh, from this committee um, as well. So we will gladly receive your feedback.
Yeah, and I want to just also, I think, you know, we are board members and I, we all bring various experiences, but like, you all are the experts. You are, because you're looking at the data. So I would love to even put it in the context of like you directing us and saying like, this is what we see. And this is what we think is helpful.
It sounds good.
Well, if there are no further um, comments or questions, colleagues, should this, uh, I don't, I don't think we're advancing this policy. I believe we were just introducing it, but I have here that this policy should be added for revisions to the SY, School Year twenty-four, twenty-five work plan. Um, do we think that, colleagues?
Um, for me, it didn't sound like it was a um, a policy. Were they just go, I thought they were just reviewing what they are currently doing from last year to this year based on the data. Can you, sorry, can you just clarify really quickly?
Yeah, so they were discussing the initial policy fifty-one, forty-three, bullying harassment or intimidation, that does exist. And this is a part of that work, um, the administrative procedure that exists around what, what they do. So we could revise the policy.
Sorry, Jonathan, I was trying to let you go without hearing my background. Yeah, no worries. If I did, if, there were no um, revisions that were being offered up, was that correct? What is advancing? Thank you.
Yeah, revision, I mean, I think ultimately the, so I, I just, the background is that um, Board Member Zapor Miller um, introduced this idea. She wanted to see if we needed to look at this, particularly for offenders and what supports are offered to them. So Dr. Holly and her team were here to present on what's happening with offenders, but also just broadly what's happening with bullying. This is the report. And so now it's up for us as board members to determine, do we think that, whether it's for offenders or just broadly? Do we want to make revisions to the policy to change anything?
Got you. I would say, yes, we do, especially because the language has shifted. Um, she was clear on the language shifting, so we should update our language on policy for that also. I, I think, yes, we should look at it in relation to it. And maybe Ms. Welsh can help us with, if, like, what needs to be modified as a result, but I think so.
Great. I mean, I agree with you.
I agree as well.
Great, okay, great, perfect. Um, so Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance um, Committee. On Policy Fifty-one, Forty-three and ensure that it's added for revision to the School Year twenty-four, twenty-five work plan.
Okay, thank you. And just to be clear, so that we're, I have it in my head, so I'm gonna put myself a little note. Two areas I think that probably we really want to address, one would be the issue of the, the largest amount of bullying is occurring in the classroom. And so does the policy need to address something as relates to that in terms of our teachers in the classroom dealing with students? And secondly, I think I, I did do the calculation, it's twenty-two point seven percent of all the total students bullied are special education students. So that's pretty significant, I think. And so we might want to also look at that in terms of language for the policy too.
I love that. I think that's great. Yeah. And then I think to Vice Chair Walker's piece around wraparound supports for parents.
Okay.
Some things there too. So.
Which um, as well, and I think that it said, um, the largest amount was with IEPs, not necessarily for special education. Unless I have both, I think you can have an IEP without being in special education.
No, you, you, to be in special ed, you absolutely have to have an IP. So it's, it's the same thing, basically.
Okay, but can you have an IEP without being in special education for behavior?
I think you're thinking of a five oh four plan. You can have a five oh four plan.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Um, and I'm not saying if you have a five oh four plan, that you're not special education, I'm just saying that there's a distinction between IEP. Okay, um, so I want to thank Dr. Holly and Mr. Watkins for joining us tonight. Um, you can stick, stick around if you want to, um, or you can leave, but we're grateful. Um, we'll likely have other board members that want to reach out to you for this presentation. So just want to extend that as um, something to be aware of, but otherwise, enjoy your Tuesday evening and thank you so much for the wonderful presentation.
Thank you guys.
Thank you all so much.
All right, take care. Okay, we're gonna move on to item three point O legislative updates, um, and we're gonna move to item three point one, May Legislative Committee Meeting Update. Um, I can provide the committee with updates uh, uh, from the May Legislative Committee Meeting. Um, well, actually, I would love for um, Mrs. Welsh, if you want to take this part, and then I can do those legislative pieces that we talked about via email.
I think that would be outstanding.
Okay, great, let's go. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Welsh.
Okay, and I'm just, I'm not gonna go through every single one, I'll just hit on the ones that are, that, that appear to be more priority uh for us. The, so the first one had to do with Senate Bill ten twenty-six and House Bill one-one-one-five. And um, uh, Board Member Chair, Chair Briggs is going to discuss this a little bit more in depth from her, his letter. But this one is an important one because of the fact that the difference in the two bills has to do with the fact that House Bill one-one-one-five says that if, if. Less than forty percent of your budget comes from the county, then you would not even have to get approval to change categories. When you're changing categories for spending. And actually, our, but I did a calculation, it's, and I did check this with, also with uh Chief Howe. It's thirty-one point eight percent of our budget is coming from the county, the rest is all state and federal funding. So I guess there'll be an important one to see what amendments they do to Senate Bill ten twenty-six. Which just requires that anything that is a ten percent change in a category has to go to the county government for approval. The next one is House Bill uh, five-five-five-eight, and that one has to do with comprehensive health education framework. Um, and I just, uh, this came up in the May meeting a couple times and it's, it's really, really critically important. Is that it looks like the legislators are really pushing to take over the responsibility of dictating what's gonna be in curriculum. And what's gonna be in the curriculum standards. And uh, in our platform alone, as well as the May platform, is very clear that that is, that, that's taking away authority. From the um, Board of Education as well as the Superintendent. And that each school system within the state of Maryland should have the opportunity to determine, there's the standards that MSD sets. But then the curriculum writing that we do is, it really should be individualized for each county. It'll address the standards, but it might come across slightly different just because of that, what, you know, what this, the county itself is doing with it. So therefore, this, this bill is, we strongly have to oppose because we don't want it to be. And the concern is, May said, that if one bill gets passed of where they end up being able to dictate curriculum. Then you can bet that will become an ongoing thing and will have more and more curriculum dictated by the legislature. And that generally means it's dictated more by uh, political uh, concerns and interests. Versus what from an educational standpoint, the educational experts think should be the standards and in the curriculum. So just, that's a really important bill. And the same with the second one, that the um, the uh, the next one, Senate Bill ten fifty-eight, House Bill eleven eighty-one. This one has to do with the anti-hate Holocaust education. And what is really um, actually, or even worse about this one is that they're saying, if you don't, if you don't follow the curriculum. That they, that is, that they're mandating, um, then they'll take the money away from the county, a certain amount of money. Because you didn't follow those curriculum standards that have been dictated by this uh, bill. So that is, it's already starting to take it a little bit further. Um, and then this, the, the next one, this uh, blind and visually impaired students, the textbook equi- uh, equity. It had, it, we support that. Um, each of the bills, the Senate Bill and House Bill have slightly different uh, amendments. And a lot of that has to do with the timing of when the information has to get to um, the um, IRC, the Instructional Resources Center. Which actually converts all the books into Braille. So um, but. So um, but this one again is something that we do support and um with amendments um. I'm going to pass the Freedom Act because it has a lot to do with the media centers and, and um. Uh, them dictating what should be in a media center, what should be the materials that are in the media center. Um, uh, access, it's one ask, one of the um, one of the bills talks about access, the general public should have access to all media centers. Which we really don't want people walking into all our school media centers um and accessing books. Um, so this one is uh, this one is a concern too. And then the next one, this one is actually the um access to attorneys, advocates and consultants. That this was amended and they did provide um, the amendments, I think, really do address some of the things we had concerns over. Uh, the, the reporting requirements, making sure there was a definition for advocates, the training requirements. So they have made some nice progress with that particular one. And um, also they talked about blueprint for Maryland, uh, House Bill fourteen twenty six. Um, and the fact that um, uh, this is um, an important bill in terms of funding. Uh, and this one again, though, is support with amendments. Um, they have already done some minor amendments, but not to the degree that I may would like them to. And then um, House Bill two hundred, Senate Bill one six one, there has been um, a um. Amendments also, and the amendments have to do with um, a lot of it has to do also with the um concentration of poverty grants in terms of. Being able to expand up to ten percent of the personnel grant, um per pupil grant funds. Um, um, so that one is important. We do support that one. And then let's see what else. Um. Okay, let's let that one go. This next one, state and county superintendent schools employment contracts, this one originally was a bill that talked about just the superintendent having in his contract. They would have to do this training and now they have expanded the training to really have the top leadership in the school system as well as the Board of Education and principals. To um, and be involved in the training. And I know um, uh, Mabe has not taken a position on it, but when I read through the bill, some of those things, some of the subjects that they want to do training on, I thought were actually pretty good. Uh, so it'll be curious to see where that one goes. Um, let me see what else. Um. Let's just see. Oh, the, the seatbelt one. So that one, that one has made some progress. They did change it so that the seatbelts do not have to have. The, the diesel buses do not now have to have seatbelts until F Y twenty eight. So they have pushed that back several years. However, they, just so you know, if the bill passes, it still will be a ten thousand dollar increase per bus. For the diesel buses and the, the, the electric buses though should not be a concern because they're, they are already being built with the seatbelts. Um. One, that's an important one, I think we have to pay attention to is the School Construction and Public Charter School Facility Fund, Senate Bill eight ninety two and House Bill one one six one, one one six one. And basically is giving, putting state funds, giving state funds to charter schools for facilities and a wide variety of things, not just facilities, but operations, rent. Oh, I can't believe a wide variety. And then it does not have any strict language on when, when in fact a, a school, like a charter school ends up closing down or whatever, or what they do with what they acquired. Because you're still talking about private entity who that has now accrued all these things through public funds. And it's not, it, there is a loophole in there to allow them to be able to walk away with some of that, uh, that if in fact um, they do get agreement to do that. So that one, that one is definitely problematic and we need to pay attention to it. Um, I think that's it. I went through them as quickly as possible. So I will let uh, uh Chair Briggs do, do the present, his presentation on all the um. Bills that he put together. And I do, I must say, that was a lot of work, what you did and just all the information you provided, I think was excellent.
Well, it was a, it was a coordinated effort, which I'm very grateful for. And also I want to mention that there's item three point two blueprint implementation update. Um, we're going to skip past that because I don't believe Ms. Welsh has anything and I don't have anything for that. Um, so I am going to move to item three point three legislative update um and just provide a really quick rundown for board members that we've already gone over. Um, Mrs. Welsh has already mentioned a number of bills. She talked about H B two hundred, Community Schools Alterations. So I'm not going to talk about that. Um, but there is the um H B three seventy six, student, a study on the feasibility of relocating the Prince George's County Public School System Headquarters. Um, and this is requiring the Prince George's County Board of Education to hire an independent consultant to study and make recommendations on the feasibility of relocating. Um, the Prince George's County Public School System Headquarters. Um, the, the good news is that the superintendent has already um. Uh, forwarded this to the operations team for them to move forward with the study. So what this bill is requiring is already actually happening. Um, and the goal would be that this would be done by June twenty twenty five. So um, we are, we are in support of it. This is actually, that's actually a full year before what's recommended in this bill. So um, we really have no um pushback and we are in full support of the bill. The next one is H B ten eighty two, Blueprint for Maryland's Future Implementation Funding and Independent Evaluation um alterations. And this bill requires for each fiscal year, each county board of education provide for the salary and benefits of the blueprint of Maryland's future implementation coordinator in the county. Um, we strongly support the bill, which requires this uh, this requirement um from state and local government. Call sharing for salaries and related costs of local blueprint implementation coordinators. Um, and we just mentioned in a memo that we sent yesterday that we know the role of uh sufficient, uh, the, this is a really important um step. In ensuring that our blueprint coordinators are um doing the work that they, that, that is required in the blueprint legislation. Um, so we're in full support of it. Um, the next bill is H B thirteen ninety, Public Schools, Public School Construction Funding and Administration. This repeals the, a provision of the law that established the intent of the General Assembly, that a new work group on the assessment and funding of school facilities be formed. Repelling the provision of law that would have repealed the School Safety Grant Program on June thirtieth um of two twenty six. Um, and we said that um, the, the bill should be amended uh to move the date from twenty twenty six to twenty twenty five. For when the Interagency Commission for School Construction uh will make its payments to P G C P S, which aligns well with our legislative um platform recommendations. So we support it with that specific uh amendment and requirement. Um, there is Senate Bill three seventy seven, Higher Education Teacher Development and Retention Program. Um, and this is altering the definition of institution of initial eligibility to include community colleges as eligible institutions. As part of the criteria for applicants for the teacher development and retention program. Um, and we mentioned that we support this bill as well. Um, and um, the board recognizes that recruiting and retaining highly effective educators. Is one of the most important factors in cultivating world-class talent with our students. We also know that our state, really nationally, we're all faced with a teacher shortage. Um, and so we are in support of staffing recruitment um steps that will help us to address that shortage. Um, I'm going to skip past ten twenty six, which is County Boards of Education Budget Notice Transparency in Education Spending, because Mrs. Welsh mentioned that. Um, another bill is H B twelve thirty seven, State Department of Education Task Force to Study the Maryland Online Special Education System. And this establishes a task force to study the Maryland online education system, requiring that the task force consider the effectiveness, functionality and usability of the Maryland online individual, individualized education program. And the Maryland Online Individualized Family Service Plan to make recommendations to maintain and upgrade the system. Um, we said that we support the bill, which requires establishing this task force. Um, special education programs play a crucial role in public schools and ensuring that every child, regardless of their abilities. Um, receive quality education tailored to their unique needs is a um, a significant requirement that we have in our legislative platform. Um, so we have no pushback on the bill. Um, there's other pieces. There's S B eight eighty four, uh, eighty four, Teacher Degree Apprenticeship. As I mentioned, we're a full support of um staffing and staffing and recruitment um in our legislative platform. Um, S B five seventy nine, Primary and Secondary Education Breakfast and Lunch Programs, Universal Expansion Report. Um, we said we support this and we state um in our legislative platform that we support a universal breakfast and lunch program as long as it is funded by the state. So we don't want any unfunded mandates, um, but we do support that, with that, with that including a amendment um or caveat. Um, we also have S B seventy seven, ten seventy seven, Public Schools Appropriations for uh School Safety Expenditures. Um, School Security Employees. Um, and this is really just ensuring that we have security um staff to help with the installation or be there with the, with the new um. Security equipment that we had installed in all of our schools. Um, so we have no pushback and we're in full support of that bill. Um, and then there's uh S B eight eighteen, Information Technology, Artificial Intelligence Policies and Procedures. And this requires each uh unit of state government to conduct certain inventories and a certain assessment. Prohibiting the Department of Information Technology from making certain information publicly available under certain circumstances. And you all would be happy to know that Mrs. Welsh, um, along with our uh, with our, with our school um district. Um, we're leading in uh our um artificial intelligence policy. So a lot of folks are actually looking um to us uh for direction around how we're addressing it in our policies. Um, and we're really um a step ahead there. And then lastly, as far as oppose goes. Um, we oppose S B eight ninety two, School Construction, Public Charter School Facility Fund Establishment. Which establishes the Public Charter School Facility Fund to provide funding on an annual basis to public charter schools in the state for eligible expenses associated with school facilities. Um, our legislative platform supports legislation to clarify ownership of charter school assets purchased with public funds. Um, but this bill not only gives public funds to the charter schools for various purposes, but also opens the door to allowing charter schools to transfer or dispose of their interest in real property. Um, and so essentially, you know, there is a possibility that our school district could be paying for uh resources that char- uh, public charter schools have. And then if there's a possibility that they um, you know, rent a space out and then we, we support them in leasing that space and they leave it. Um, that they are assets that the public charter school has divest, you know, divested in, I believe is the word I'm trying to say. Um, that uh, we want to ensure that we're not mixing those um public dollars for private purposes. Um, and most uh, uh, public charter schools are privately funded. Um, and so that's really just making that distinction, which is um significant. So those are the bills that we have here. Mrs. Welsh, do you want to correct me on anything or do you want to add any additional pieces?
Uh, I absolutely do not want to correct you on anything, but I do want to say the conversation we had around bullying and the possibility of putting in a student I D card. Their, their badge, the um, the Q R code for when they want to do bullying. There is Bill, Senate Bill one twenty two. And it's just passed in the House and in the Senate and has to do with putting the crisis hotline number, telephone, telephone number on their um. On their uh I D, I D badge, um, which they can call in case they're feeling like they would want to commit suicide or something, or they need help, they can call this number. So if, if in fact this passes and it has gone through the House and the Senate, which means there's a high probability it's going to pass. Then we'd be already doing that change to the badges. We could also add then the Q R code for the bullying and have both on the back of their badges.
Loving. I, I was like, I thought I saw that somewhere. I know it's happened in Tennessee and I was like, I thought it was happening here. Um, so I think that'd be perfect and I appreciate you mentioning that. And so that's something that I'll add as a note for us to track. Um, but that's great. Um, so if there are no other comments, we're going to move to item four point O, which is items for discussion.
Uh, Mr. Briggs, if that's a.
Yeah, no problem, Vice Chair Walker.
Oh, good. Thank you so much. Um, I love these. Um, I would, uh, is it possible for us to. Align maybe offline on the dates that these bills are coming to you, I and the other Policy and Governance Committee folks. Who can go up and testify. I think that would be great. Crossover has happened and I think it's high time for us to be able. For instance, the charter, there's a number of them that we opposed with really good rationale. So would love to be able to do that in person if we can, as well as the um, you know, supports. So that we can be supportive of the legislation coming forward.
Yeah, yes. I believe she'll be back. So um, but that means we don't have a quorum, so I don't think we can move forward until she comes back.
Sorry, I'm in the woods. I think you got the gist of what I was trying to say. I think we can just let the, uh, the person know who pulled that bill together. Uh, that we are in support of that. If they can add this piece in with the Q R code, that'll be, thanks.
Yeah, no problem at all. Yeah. And that's a great idea and I'm happy to meet. Uh, maybe we can do that this Friday since Mrs. Welsh will be off as well as Shelby will deserve a break for all of you all. Um, you deserve it. Okay, so I'm going to, we went to item four point O, items for discussion. There are two more policies for discussion. Each discussion will last uh two and a half minutes. Um, so we're going to move to item four point two, Policy Forty One Thirteen, Community Involvement in the Principal Selection Process. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on Policy Forty One Thirteen, Community Involvement in the Principal Selection Process.
Okay, uh, Cindy, you mind putting it up on the screen, please? Just while she's finding it. Okay, she's coming up. So what I did want to say is that the current policy is this like one big paragraph. That talks about that we want the community to be involved in the, in the principal selection process. It doesn't really give very much uh detail or information. And I did, I did, I did pull from it. I did not, I did not use the format it was in. I just went and pulled some language from it and it has to do in our policy statement. Where I did add that the board recognizes that the support of everyone in our community is essential to the success of our schools and students. And this success enriches our community and that one of the board's goals is to promote greater accountability and parental and community interaction with the school. So that comes from the current policy. It's on the, our website. And then I also added that, that um, as a policy statement, the board also believes that family and community engagement is a shared responsibility, essential component for improving academic outcomes of our students. And that actually came from our board policy zero one zero five, which is parent, family and community involvement. So that's where I got those two for the policy statement. And then as you move down, the purpose of the policy is to ensure that the stakeholders are involved and participate in the principal selection process. And of course, the stakeholders includes uh staff, parents, community groups. And for the high schools, it's uh, when we're looking for high school principals, high school students are also included in that process. Um, and so then that, uh, there's uh several standards, not many, but this one, first of all, that makes sure that um. Uh, vacancy is posted on the website of the school that a principal vacancy is uh coming, that has occurred. Along with information about the selection process for the principal, so that the public knows how that process uh works. And then there's a, a providing a leadership profile survey that uh would also be pu- uh posted on the school's website for the stakeholders, like parents, they could go in or staff. And they would complete the survey and it basically solicits, solicits the feedback from them in terms of what they believe should be the recommended leadership characteristics of the new principal. So that's all important information in the process of identifying um a principal for a school. And then the next thing would be um that the superintendent or designated will establish procedures for advertising and. Um, for the pre-screening, screening and then interviewing process for the selection of the principal. And the, in the interviewing process, um, in addition to several other in- interview activities, a panel. Which would include school-specific staff, community members and high school students or high school, uh, that, that would be just for the high school panels. From the school in which the principal vacancy exists. So they would be um, the group that would do a set of interviews. Um, to get the, the public, the, the parents and community members um perspective in terms of uh what is needed for the student. And then a school-specific interview panel shall have the opportunity to provide their recommendations to the superintendent. And then the superintendent or designated shall consider candidates recommended from the school-specific interview and make a recommendation to the board for appointment. And then the board shall respond before the appointment of the principal. So it's pretty, it's pretty clear cut as um, it's their, they um, the H R is going through its regular interview process. But I mean, their, their process for hiring and selecting a candidate, except in this instance, there will be a whole section built out. To first to get the input from the community in terms of the fee, the survey, the leadership survey, as well as then a panel of uh, it would, I, the parents and. Students as well as school-based staff for that particular school where they're interviewing for the principal of that school to get their uh feedback. Um, and then that information goes together as a recommendation to the superintendent so that the superintendent can then make the final recommendation to the board for appointment. Are there any questions?
Hey. I don't see any questions, but something I want to just mention, um, Mrs. Welsh is I think it'd be really good if we can actually start to have like, when a policy is introduced, why it was introduced. Um, you know, if it was someone who, I think we can probably work together, you, Cindy and I, like when people submit policies, the reason why they'd like to see a change in addition to the superintendent. So that we can know why this one was coming up, because I think the process seems good, but if there are any gaps in it, um, I'd love to know what the reason was for the introduction.
I, I can tell you, I actually, since I, the reason why this one came up is because the other one is very old and it's very non-specific and just the, and I would say the majority of our policies. Are coming up because if you look at the dates, they're from like two thousand and ten. And they real, they don't meet, meet our formats at all, as well as they don't have, there's no standard. So it's just this general statement and then there's no standards and the board's. So it's just this general statement and then there's no standards. And the board's job is in terms of governance to be saying what it is they would like to see. So that's why we have the standards in the policies.
Okay, that makes sense. Colleagues, could this policy be brought forward for committee action or retained for further discussion?
Hey there, before I vote to move it forward, I, I did just have a question, just based on what Mr. Briggs was asking as well. The input, I, I recognize that we are updating. It is time to update a lot of our records. So thank you very much. But one, the community input, and was that piece a gap that we were told that, you know, community members wanted to have a say inside of the principal?
They, they already have had, had a say. So, so based on the old policy, there is administrative procedure goes along with that. And they do have a whole process where they do have the panels, the parent, the secondary panel, whatever. What's it called? The school-specific interview panel. And that, and they do have the opportunity as well as they also do the whole process of the survey to get their feedback on who they like the characteristics of what a leader should be for that particular.
Yeah, I think the only piece I was missing was if there was any gap that we were specifically saying for the parents to have more input. But no worries. Thank you. I'm, I'm ready to move it forward. Jonathan, for action. Mr. Briggs, thank you.
Any objections? Yeah, I think it's good as, as is. So Mrs. Welsh, please take under advisement the recommendations made tonight by the Policy Governance Committee on Policy forty-one thirteen. And bring it back to the next P and G for, for action.
Okay.
Thank you. Right. We went to item four point three, policy sixty-one sixty-one, core curriculum resources. I yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide the committee with an update on policy sixty-one sixty-one, core curriculum resources.
So to start with, the reason this one was on the work plan for this year is again, the same reason the other one was, it's a very old policy. And it, it was a very generic statement in terms of the process, in terms of, you know, picking out textbooks, instructional materials. I do want to say one thing before we get into it though, is that I went to look in other counties to see, which I often do to see what kinds of things they include in their policies as it relates to, in this instance, it would have been core curriculum resources. And interestingly enough, none of the school systems have a policy on core curriculum resources. What they do have though, is a policy on curriculum development. So then I went and looked at all our policies to see whether or not we have any curriculum, really any policy that specifically is addressing curriculum development, and we don't. So my recommendation would be for the twenty-five school year work plan that we at least think about putting on a policy that addresses the development of curriculum, because it's such an important, such an important job that we do. And as sort of amazing that we don't have any curriculum, that any policy that addresses that. And so I just think maybe that's something we want to look at for twenty twenty-five. As far as just curriculum writing and curriculum development. Anyway, as far as this one, core curriculum resources. This basically, again, there was just one big paragraph that talks about infirming our responsibility to provide every student with appropriate high-quality textbooks and materials of, of instruction to support learning of all students in all classes and every grade level. And that language came from the previous, the previous policy. So the purpose of this policy is to articulate the board's expectation for establishing this, a structure for the identification of appropriate textbooks, instructional materials and accountability for, for those materials. I did also get Dr. White's input on this particular policy to make sure that included the kinds of things they go through when they are identifying the instructional materials and the textbooks. So we do have definition of the classroom instructional material and the required textbook series. And then basically, the standards are that the superintendent or designated shall ensure that a committee of instructional staff and identified stakeholders as appropriate is formed to review and recommend textbooks and instructional materials. And that the committee be responsible reviewing and recommending textbooks and instructional materials. And then the vendors for the textbooks and the instructional materials shall be selected in accordance to your board policy six one eight zero point one, which is evaluation and selection of classroom instructional materials, so that the two of those go together. And then based on the committee's recommendation and chosen vendor, the board will vote to approve the selection of the textbook and instructional materials. Also, the superintendent designated shall establish the adoption, an adoption timeline for textbooks and instructional materials. Because the one thing you don't want is to have your textbooks really outdated and not up to date in the information they need to have. And then that the superintendent designated shall ensure that the process is in place in every school to inventory all textbooks and instructional materials and maintain these items in a secure location. So what should be happening at the end of the school year, the, every classroom, every teacher is supposed to return all their textbooks. And I'm sure they have big storage closets in the schools. And then I inventory them so that you can say, you know, we started the year with, I don't know, a hundred and some textbooks and we end the year with hopefully a hundred and some textbooks. And then this last section again comes from your current policy, which says that students are expected to return such print textbooks and other similar educational materials as they were originally furnished to the appropriate school personnel in satisfactory condition. That they, or they have to reimburse the school for damaged textbooks or other similar, similar educational materials. Or reimburse the school for lost textbooks or similar educational materials at the cost of replacement of textbooks and other similar educational materials. Or make other satisfactory arrangements with the principal or their designated concerning the textbook or other similar education materials. So I think that was there, that was in the, is in the policy right now. I think the goal here is just to ensure that we're not losing textbooks or that they're getting destroyed because they're expensive. And, you know, we have so many things to put our money towards that we don't want to have to replace things that, you know, we don't need to replace at the time. And then the other thing is that the superintendent shall ensure that an annual year and audit is conducted in each school to document inventory. So it's really just accountability and making sure we're tracking the textbooks we have and the other supplementary instructional materials. So we have it because they're valuable for us in terms of teaching our students. And then it says the superintendent is responsible for authorized to develop an administrative procedure to implement this policy. So it's really just very nuts and bolts.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Okay. So colleagues, floor is now open for discussion. Okay, seeing no hands. Mrs. Welsh, the only thing I would just suggest here is I feel like textbooks is going to eventually be a thing of the past. Just given laptops and everyone, you know, all students have one. So as far as like, I'm assuming that it'll probably be more that schools will invest in digital textbooks for students. And maybe if our policy could be updated to kind of be ahead of that, once that officially is like a thing. But other than that, I think the policy looks good.
Are you, so you suggesting that, so I do it under classroom instructional materials. There is materials such as resource toolkits, tools, kits and digital licenses deemed necessary to affect it. Because what would probably happen then, it would be a function of buying license for different textbooks and stuff.
Yeah, the licensing. Yeah, that's what I was essentially getting at. So that was it. So that's already in there in this one.
Yeah.
Colleagues, should this policy be brought forward for committee action or retained for further discussion?
I think for, for.
Great. Thank you so much, Vice Chair Walker. Vice Chair of the Committee, Rivera Forbes, did you say something? I think she was agreeing with that. So I'm going to go with Mrs. Welsh. Under advisement, the recommendations made tonight by the Policy and Governance Committee on Policy sixty-one sixty-one. And bring it back to the next P and G meeting for action. Okay, so we're going to move on to item five point O, items for review or action. There are four items for review or action. Again, each discussion round will last two and a half minutes. We're going to move on to item five point one, policy student information and records. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward policy student records and information to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment?
So move.
Great. Is there a second? I'll, I'll second it. So it's been moved and seconded. I would now yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of the new policy.
Okay, so this policy is actually a consolidation of two of our current policies. It's board policy five one two six student records, records and then board policy five one two six, student information. I have, I had got a typo here, darn it. It's five one, one is five one two five and one is five one two six. I will have to check that. Anyway. So they have, they've been consolidated into one policy, student information, education records. And to ensure that we're in compliance with the state laws and federal laws and regulations. The policy has the following requirements, that we provide annual notification to parents of current students and eligible students of their rights under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA. And that we develop a process for parents to inspect and review their child's educational records and request an amendment to their child's education record. And that we establish a process for schools to review student records for accuracy and relevancy. And that we are in compliance with the Maryland State Department of Education's requirements for students transferring within Prince George's County Public Schools and to schools where the student seeks to attend and then maintain the confidentiality of all student education records. So that policy addresses those things that also addresses disclosure of directory information and notifying parents annually of their ability to opt out of the disclosure. And also that about providing military recruiters or institutions to hire and access to a secondary student's name, address and telephone number. Unless the student's parent or eligible student has provided written notification that the information may not be released. So that's basically everything that this policy covers.
Great. Yes, this one's still fresh. Are there any objections to forwarding the new policy to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. We're going to move on to item five point two, policy zero one zero one, educational equity. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward policy zero one zero one, educational equity to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment?
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. I would now yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of policy zero one zero one.
So this policy, first of all, Comar thirteen A oh one oh six oh one actually requires that the, this, this particular policy, as school systems review this policy once every three years. So the reason this policy was even on the work plan was because it had been in place for three years and it was time to do a review of it. So that's why we are reviewing it. And basically, the whole goal of it is to establish standards of behavior to ensure that the school system is providing every student equitable access to the educational rigor, resource supports that are designed to maximize the student's academic success and social emotional wellbeing. And that achievement will improve for all PGPS students and achievement gaps will be eliminated. And so it does establish goals for educational equity and then addresses the facilitation, monitoring and implementation of the systemic equity initiatives when, within the local, the average student succeeds as a consolidation plan. The policy also includes the following requirements. That we foster welcoming learning environments where diverse cultures and experiences will be acknowledged. That we provide students with equitable access to high-quality, diverse instructional curriculum and culturally relevant pedagogy. That we recruit, hire, support, develop and retain a culturally provisioned workforce that reflects the diversity of the student body and the communities of each respective school. That we welcome and empower families to engage in their children's education. That we, we review and revise policies, procedures and our practices that may impede the equitable access to fair, disciplined extracurricular activities before and after a school day and school year academic resources and services and academic programs. That we address student behavior through the use of appropriate behavior interventions. And we provide one day of mandatory professional development to all staff that address equity, diversity and belonging. So those are basically the main requirements. The policy also has, has an expectation of the superintendent to develop an annual Prince George's County Public School Equity Plan. That's supposed to be submitted to the board at the start of each academic year. And then to establish and maintain an administrative office, which was when Dr. David Reese came to present. He is actually the director of that office to, which is dedicated to the implementation of the Prince George's County Public Schools Equity Plan.
Great. Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Are there any objections to forwarding policy zero one zero one to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment? Hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment. We're going to move on to item five point three, bylaw, regular board meetings. Colleagues, I'm moved to take the motion relating to bylaw, regular board meetings from the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward bylaw, regular board meetings to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment?
Second.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. Is, it, I will now yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview of the new bylaw.
So the bylaw itself basically lays out the components of the, of the regular board meeting. And we had reviewed it previously in terms of everything that needs to be concluded. And if you scroll down, and then then it gets definitions for different aspects. It goes into what the agenda needs to include. And that's what I want to come back and talk about in one second, but let's just keep moving forward. And then it talks about also what would happen in work sessions. And generally, that was to address the the five major areas are in our strategic plan. So then, and then it says the board chair shall be responsible presiding over all the meetings. And in the absence, the board chairs, of the board chair, the vice chair will preside over a board meeting. So this particular, this, if you recall, is part of ninety-three sixty, which is called Meetings of the Board, which is this massive document that has a million little pieces of information in it. And so we are in the process dividing it out to make it much user-friendly for both the board members and the public. So that you can just go in and see specifically on this particular one, you're just looking at your regular board meeting. In terms of what that is set up for. So then the, at our last meeting, we had a conversation about a section, if you can scroll back. Thank you, Cindy, to where it was an invitation to participate in silent prayer reflection. And there was a conversation about possibly doing a, a survey of the public, sending that out. And then also for me to do some legal research in terms of what is, what the law basically says. So the, and in my research, basically, the Supreme Court has not made a specific ruling to school boards and prayer in school boards. However, they have several rulings on different, on different cases related to prayer and graduation services and extracurricular activities. And so it's not because they said you can pray, it's just they haven't addressed that specific topic. But clearly, school-based or school-related functions, the Supreme Court has been, you know, saying that it's not acceptable because it's a violation of the Establishment Clause. The circuits, the Fourth Circuit, again, sort of like the Supreme Court has addressed things sort of, oh, so the Fourth Circuit, we are the state of Maryland is considered in the Fourth Circuit. And these are circuit court decisions, so court of appeals decisions. And the Fourth Circuit hasn't addressed the topic exactly. However, they have had related types of function of cases where their opinions indicate that there needs to be definitely a separation of church and state. And that you cannot violate the establishment clause in different functions. There are however, functions of a school. There are however, two U.S. Circuit Courts of Appeals that have expressly ruled that school board prayers are unconstitutional. So I think at this point, and the function, the purpose behind that is that the, the meetings are conducted on school property, school officials conduct the meetings. There's a school-related issues that are focal point of discussions at meetings. Students have an incentive to attend meetings since they cannot voice their opinion through their normal electoral process. So they can come and give public comment. But in order to do that, they must sit through a prayer if they, if they want to come and be there. They also are, they have the incentive to attend meetings since the subject matter board meetings directly affect them. But again, they, they have to sit through, going through the prayer in order to be able to have the opportunity to sit and listen to any of the subject matter that's being discussed. They also can appeal disciplinary actions and, and in that instance would possibly have to be exposed to a prayer. And then they also are invited to attend to receive honors and awards. And our school board does a lot of recognizing students and providing honors and awards to our students. But in order to get recognized and receive those, a lot of times you have to sit through, through the prayer. So that is why these, these circuit courts have basically said that they are because school is mandatory, students have, are required to go to school. We don't, we do have a separation of church and state in the school, on school property, in the school environment. The school board, in essence, the meetings are sort of an extension of that process. And they wouldn't even be at a school board meeting if in fact, it's school itself wasn't mandatory. And they wouldn't even be at a school board meeting if in fact, it's school itself wasn't mandatory for them. So that's sort of the reasoning behind all this. So then I went and I wanted to see, well, what are all the other counties in Maryland doing? And actually, um, Montgomery County, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Howard County, Frederick County, and Hartford County. Those are the only ones I looked up. They have no prayer. Um, the, my Baltimore City has a moment of silence. And Baltimore County has a silent meditation. The only one that I, that I did look, that I did, I mean, I looked at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I didn't have time to look at all twenty-four, but I tried to get the seven largest systems close to us as possible. And the other one I did look at was Anarundel County, and they actually do have an invocation in their, their, um, in their board meetings. Um, so that's the only one out of the seven that, that actually do, um, two, three, four, five, yeah, seven that they, um, that actually does a prayer. But the other six do not. So I, I, so in sharing information about what I found legally, Jonathan said, well. So I'm sorry, board member Briggs said, I'm, I am, um, I, I think maybe we shouldn't do the survey. Because it seems like from a legal perspective, maybe we wanna go down the, the route of just doing like meditation or something and not having a specific prayer. So maybe we should bring it back to have a conversation. So that's, I wanted to bring you this information so that we could see if you wanted to. Make a change in the language that's currently there, invitation to participate in silent prayer or reflection. Or, and, or leave it the same based on the information we currently have.
Yeah, thanks so much, Mrs. Welsh. Yeah, it definitely sounds like from your legal research, the Federal Court of Appeals has cases that at least give some. Basis for, um, not doing that. And, um, I, I agree. I think if all the, if you've chosen, looked at the, the, uh. Seven largest counties and that's what they're doing, then it makes sense to me. Um, but I do wanna just open the floor and see if there are any objections to forwarding the new policy. Uh, the new bylaw to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment with, um. Including in, we're, we're not, we're not including prayer in that, um, in that specific recommendation. Um, Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you so much. Um, a couple of things. One is, um, on the agenda for the board meeting. If you could just put that back on a screen, we do, we do need to add under B, so I guess a C or revised C would be, um, the. Um, board pla- the board commitment statement, um, which is new. We have an opportunity to put that in now. That wasn't there. And then, um. Uh, there was something else that I saw. Oh, I don't know that it needs to go on here. It says report of the chair. But there's occasions where the vice chair has a report as well. So maybe. I guess it could be that the chair then recognizes in her report the vice chair to say something so that it's not in all the time list. But for instance, if there's a follow-up that I'm responsible for, then I will report out on that. Um, so maybe we just, inside of our documentation that we'll work on offline, um, we can just notate that. In the event that, that the vice chair is working on something that needs to report out, then the chair can recognize the vice chair inside of that role. Um, makes sense. So it doesn't need to go on here. I would just add the, the board commitment statement on this piece here, if we could. Um, the piece about, well, does that make sense? Um, Ms. Welsh, before I move on, okay.
Yeah, in fact, I, I, I was gonna ask you, cuz I went back to look at our agenda and I said, oh, look, you have a Board of Education commitment statement. Should we be?
We do, we just started. We're gonna get even better. But yeah, we do have that. So thank you, uh, Ms. Adley. You can, you can put that down there. The piece on the prayer, you know, um. I, I feel as though it should stay status quo and we ask it for revisions inside of the public comment. We don't yet know that it's something that our particular district is in the need of or feels that there's a particular gap. I think it came here, literally, we started talking about it just in general, but there's nothing that's told us that we need to make a change. Um, if I remember correctly. So I think just through public comment, we can just, you know, as we promote this one, maybe we intentionally promote this one and say like, hey, we're not gonna do a survey. But we would absolutely love to hear from you in public comment, whether it's written or testimony, and we can get it from there to make the necessary changes. That's my thought on that. I just feel like we might be making changes and there's no one to ask for a change. Makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, well, and the nice thing is just adding in an additional piece to that is that it's now, um. The invitation to a silent prayer or reflection. So it would just be, instead of the prayer, it's just silent. But you can pray, you can reflect, you can meditate, you can do whatever. Um, and so the opportunity to pray is still there. For those that would, would like to, um, but this would just be making that. Do you still have opinions on that?
Yeah, I, 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 again, I just, I don't know what prompted us to need to make a change. I hear that there's some things across the largest school districts, and then you still have Anarundel County, which still keeps the same thing as, they just call it invocation. So I'm happy to shift it if our constituency is asking for it. It just doesn't sound like they are. So I just don't know that we need to make a change and maybe through our public comment, we can just be very specific on asking that question. I'm, I'm a proponent for things staying the way that they are, but I'm happy to go with wherever we go.
That's interesting, okay. Cuz I'm like the opposite. I am very much so like you. But, um, I will, uh, uh, Cindy, I know you have some pieces around the logistics here. Cuz we had this conversation before.
Yes, I was just gonna tell board member, um, Walker that on the website, we do have that listed. Out for public comment right here. So if Casey wanted to add it to your, um, newsletter.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I will add that. Thank you so much.
Yes, we have no responses as of today, just so you know.
Good, good. Yes, I think we should actively promote that one. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Oh, that's good, Cindy. Um, can I ask a question? So right now, or when we, when it goes up, it goes back up. For public co- comment, I guess, or wherever it's going. Can, should we, should, what do we, what do you want on it? Do you want it back to board prayer or do you want it, what, we have a moment of silent meditation or whatever it is that we have on this, it's not on the screen right now, so I don't have it in front of me. But what do you want that to end up saying right this moment as it goes out to the public?
Yeah, cuz right now it says invitation to silent prayer or reflection. So, and which is harmless language. Um, but yeah, do we, are we okay with the policy being as is? Um, as we seek public comment, or do we wanna stick with prayer?
Yeah, I'm happy to go as is. I don't know who that was that was talking. Sorry, go ahead.
As is, okay. So she's okay with as it is. Oh, and Rain, did you have any perspective?
Yes, I was gonna say, my personal opinion, I'm fine with the board prayer. I'm fine with the way it is, so.
Oh, well, let's be clear. The way it is right now is the revision that, um, Mrs. Welsh made, which is invitation for silent prayer or reflection. So it sounds like.
Oh, no, I meant board prayer. Thank you for, um, for saying that. No, I meant to keep it as, um, board prayer. I guess revert back is the proper words. And then ask if it's more like maybe in my write-up, I'll just say, hey, there was some talk around being an invitation to silent reflection. How would, you know, this feel for the public, which would you prefer? And then I can, you know, bring that back to our next meeting, no problem. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, and can I ask, can I just share two things, uh, Chair Briggs? One, uh, one is in your, I noticed that in your agendas currently, the last meeting on the twenty-first, you also have a thing called roll call. So do you want that included in the, include there? Cuz you do take, uh, roll call. And I have seen on this agendas on other schools, when I was looking at their agendas. Are they, some of the school systems do put like a roll call so that you know you're taking role for the board members. So I can put that as one of the items, include that in there.
Sure, I mean, that's fine if, uh, if we wanted to be explicit. I, I think that's fine. And yes, to your question. Um, and then my stance on the prayer, I don't have a problem with the prayer, um, but I do like the, I think the spirit of the idea. Of offering up an alternative for people who may feel uncomfortable. So my only piece is that if there is someone. Who feels, even if they don't vocalize in the public comment and say like, hey, I don't wanna see it. Um, I think the, the alternative is more inclusive because it just assumes you can do whatever you wanna do versus think praying. Um, so that'd be my only piece, but it sounds like I'm outvoted here. Um, so I'm happy to go with, with either.
No, I don't think you're outvoted. I do think we talked about it, you know, a couple of times, and I think Rain and I are both saying, like, hey, if you feel strongly, which it feels you do. Feel strongly that this is, you know, more inclusive, I'm happy to put that forward and then just ask the opposite question. Uh, you know, does board prayer feel better to you? So I'm fine to do that and be all-inclusive, to be honest with you. It's no problem at all. So I am a, I, I'm fine to leave it as it currently is written for invitation to silent prayer or reflection. And then we just have a moment of, again, silence.
Okay.
Uh, I just think intention, uh, uh, yeah, I just think sometimes in order to actually have it happen. And not shuffle papers or do all of the things, sometimes it's, it's helpful to, um, have it as a intention.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Uh, Mrs. Welsh?
I just, um, wanted to answer, um, board member Walker's, want her one question, cuz she said, well, where did this come about from? Cuz no, no one in the community brought that to our attention or anything. We hadn't heard it through that. I think it actually was the board members, they. They came back from the National School Board Association Conference, and that's in one of the sessions they sat and they brought it back. And talked about the fact that it would be important to, to change it to like silent meditation or a moment of silent prayer or something like that versus actually having prayer. And I think part of their thinking was also because the, we do have a lot of diversity in this, in the, in this, the school community and everything in the county. That the idea being, you know, that it opens the door to, uh, anyone regardless of their religion.
Yeah, let's move forward with it. I can put a motion on the table. I'm, I'm fine to vote on that and just ask off.
The beautiful thing is we don't have to do anything cuz we'll just leave it as is right now. So we're okay with. Um, so it sounds like there's no objections to forwarding the new bylaw to the full board with the recommendation to public comment as it is right now.
No, with the.
Rain, we, um, absolutely cannot hear you.
Chair Briggs.
Uh, we still can't hear you, Rain.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit better, yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes, that's better.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, you can, you can hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm in a, a bad connection area. I hope you can hear what I'm saying. I was saying I still, um, am siding with the original board prayer.
You want the prayer, okay. Um, well, that's fine, cuz this, this is the point of this, this democracy. So, um, but I think, so it sounds like the, 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 the vote here is vice chair Walker. Sounds like you're saying you're okay with it being more inclusive. I'm okay with, like I said, I'm voting that I would like for it to be more inclusive. Um, if we wanna do board prayer, I just wanna make sure we can move forward, uh.
Yeah, but the, yes, let me, thank you for acknowledging me. I believe that prayer is inclusive. So we could say, you know, join us for board prayer, um, and you can also do your silent meditation at the same time. Like, I think that we can be inclusive as we say it out loud. I don't know that for putting board prayer is any different than us. Making sure people feel included, which I think is really our goal, is to ensure that all of our diverse communities feel included inside of this. And so while everyone prays to maybe a, a different God or maybe no God at all. I think that in that we do have a board prayer and we invite you to also do a silent meditation at the same time. I think those are words that we can invite our community to do. So I, I, I just don't want people to think that it's not all-inclusive thought if you have board prayer on there.
Can we just replace the word silent and just say invitation to participate in board prayer or reflection?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Like, we appreciate, that was good, actually. So easy.
All right, so we're gonna strike the word silent. Please, and thank you, Mrs. Welsh.
Okay, I, um, can everyone hear me again? Okay, I align with what, um, Vice Chair Walker said and the inclusivity there. So, just so we can get the bill, I mean, the policy passed.
Very good. So we're gonna, we're just going for public comment. So, um, we are, we're agreeing that we're gonna strike the language and then you're gonna, uh, strike silent. Um, in the board prayer piece, and then we're gonna add in roll call, just because we already do a roll call, so that it's just be explicit language in the, um, in the policy.
Um, but I'm sorry, can I just ask one clarifying question? But so what I thought I heard, but I might be wrong, is that we're gonna have board prayer, prayer and reflection. Is that correct?
Okay. Not or reflection, yeah. Um, all right, so are there, are there any objections to forwarding the new, uh, uh, bylaw to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. We're gonna move on to item five point four, bylaw executive session. Colleagues, may I have a motion to forward bylaw executive session to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment?
Second, oh, sorry, motion, uh, yes.
Second.
Okay, is it moved and seconded? I now, I will now yield the floor to Mrs. Welsh to, uh, provide an overview of the new bylaw.
So executive session is, um, really referencing when you, um, go to a, when you're in public session and you vote, um, in favor of closing the public session. And then you move into executive session. So I did talk to the parliamentarian in terms of the language that ensure that it's very clear. Because the Opens Meeting Act actually references closed session, but the education article actually references ed- um, executive session. So the language, I went over this with him and he was in agreement that the, what it would say is that the public session must. Um, that the board members present in the public session must vote in favor of closing the public session. Prior to moving into executive session in which the vote shall be recorded. And actually, um, you already do that, but we wanted to make sure that that was very clear in the language for this particular policy. I mean, for this bylaw. So that, um, that, that was, that's included in this particular bylaw. And then you also have to develop a written statement for the reasons why you're moving into executive session. Um, and include the legal citations. And all of the, all the possible topics or matters that you can discuss. Are actually listed in the general provisions, uh, article in, in the, um, Ante code of Maryland, section three dash three oh five. And these are the only things that you are allowed to discuss in those, in those meetings. And then anything that is discussed in the meeting, it is, uh, confidential cuz it is executive session. And then, but all your, you can discuss all you want and everything, but your actual final actions related to any matter that you discuss in the exec- executive session. Has to be made in the regular board meeting, which is public. Um, so that is basically it in a nutshell. And that's just a listing of all the things that are in the law that, uh, you can discuss in your, uh, closed executive session.
Thank you, Mrs. Welsh. Before we move forward, I'm gonna recognize, um, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, and I, I really hate to interrupt. Uh, I just wanna make sure, because of the last training we received about the term executive session versus closed session. I wanna make sure that, um, with Miss Welsh, that those terms are interchangeable in the references that you use. Cuz I think the parliamentarian said there's, you know, it's something about the language of, we should be using closed session and not executive session.
Oh, well, I, all I know is that I asked him about the fact that, I mean, the fact that because the education article actually references the executive session. And moving into executive session, that, um, so he said, well, do this. The main important thing is, is that you're closing the public session to the public. So it's important that you lay out that language so that says specifically, you're, you're voting to close it. And, and now it's not open to the public and you're moving into this closed executive session. Um, I mean, I, I don't know if you, I mean, I, and I just followed up with him to get clarification. Because I know he had, he had, um, I guess, I don't know why I did it. I just knew you had, I had heard he had, had comments about. So that's what he shared with me. If you wanna move it all over to closed session, I don't care. It's up, it's certainly up to the committee members. I, I, I just was, um, based on our conversation. And Dennis, you might wanna say what you think it should be, uh, cuz you're the board's attorney anyway.
It, it's my understanding that she spoke with the parliamentarian after our session and that this is compromised language to try to be. As, um, true to the Opens Meeting Act language and the Comer language.
Okay, and either way, I think if it's not the case, then we can provide amendments. Um, at the, once we're like, gonna vote as a full board, we can just add an amendment to that. And so we can check in with the parliamentarian one more time. Cuz I do remember him saying that. Um, but he says a lot of stuff and I, I can't remember if that was the, the exact thing that he said or not, so, um.
And I mean, if you want, I mean, I can switch it all over to closed session right now, too. It's, I, it's just, you know.
I think if you talk to him and he said that, I, my think, thinking is that we should go with, um, what Mr. Willie's saying, let's just move forward. But if it is, um, that he didn't mean that, then I think we can just alpha an amendment, um, when we vote on the policy for that to be changed.
Okay.
Um, so are there any objections to forwarding the new, uh, bylaw to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment? Okay, hearing none, the motion passes. The policy will be moved to the full board with the recommendation to seek public comment. We're now gonna move on to item six point O, committee recommendations, new business and governance, which there is none. Um, so we'll proceed to, um, item seven point one, follow-ups. Uh, follow-ups from previous meetings will be posted on board docs upon receipt. Um, item seven point two is next steps. Um, and the next, uh, policy and governance committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. At five P.M. Um, the meeting will be virtual, so please check the PGTPS board webpage for more information. I'm gonna get to you in just a second, Vice Chair Walker. I'm gonna move to the part, um, where it asks if there are any additional comments. So, um, we're gonna move to item eight, uh, which is closing remarks from the chair and adjournment. uh, which is closing remarks from the chair and adjournment. Um, thank you, everyone, for a great meeting, uh, this evening and, and meaningful discussions around board policies. Um, uh, Vice Chair Walker, I want to just turn to you before we wrap up.
Yeah, thank you so much. I actually wanted to, um, go for any follow-ups. One of the follow-ups I was actually hoping to have is, um, in our na- I would love for our uh, committee, uh, to consider, uh, putting forth a ninety-day plan for our transition to be smooth and it coming from the Policy and Governance Committee at our next, um, meeting. And so I'm hoping that our Policy and Governance Committee can consider that, um, so that I can make a motion in our upcoming, um, meeting on behalf of our Policy and Governance Committee. I'd like to just, day plan. Thank you.
I think that's a great idea, and I appreciate you mentioning that because that'll help us to be proactive and hold us accountable as well to getting that started. So thank you for mentioning it. Um, and. Okay, so we're going to move, uh, to, may I have a motion to adjourn the March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four Policy and Governance meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Your second, great. It's been moved and seconded. Any objections? Hearing none, the time is now seven oh seven P.M. Oh, yes, so this March twenty-six, twenty twenty Policy and Governance Committee meeting is adjourned. Before we, um, stop recording, Cindy, is there something you want to say while recorded, or can we do that after?
No, I just need some clarity and, on, um, board member Walker's, um, requests.
Okay, I think we stop the recording then and then, um, get that answered.